Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, all your Christmas stories can have to close down to just an end for just now. And we're going to open the public hearing. Ms. Huberger, if you would please.
Yes, Mr. President, to the board. Good to see you this evening. Tonight, we'll be conducting a public hearing on the year one projects of the new five-year plan that was recently presented to you. Some of the things that you know that are on there are district-wide needs in the district, buses, furniture, soccer field, baseball outfield, restrooms at JHS, CHS auditorium, if you recall that list that the superintendent presented to you. So that's the purpose of this meeting tonight. This is the public hearing, one of two that we're required to have. So this evening, we will do a presentation and we will have the official 1028 hearing that will be open to the public for comment. At this time, I'd like to introduce Luke Brogman with Stiefel, who will present to you the financials regarding surrounding this borrowing.
Good evening. Luke Brogman with Stiefel. We serve as a volunteer for the school corporation. We put a couple of slides together just to show how this specific project will fit into the school corporation's tax rate goal of $1.10. So on the first slide, we have all the school corporation's outstanding debt payments and also have estimated on some that have been authorized by the board but have not yet been issued. You'll see all of the payments there going out for 20 years and how that correlates to the school corporation's tax rate. Here are the three components of the school corporation's tax rate. You have your operations fund in gray, the pension bond fund in teal, that's actually paying off in 2024, and then in navy blue is the debt service fund. As you can see, in 2023 and 2024, the tax rate's going to be $1.10. If we went back farther, that $1.10 tax rate has been there historically. But you'll notice in 2025 that there is a tax rate cliff beginning of that year. So when we flip to the next slide, in gray is what was on the previous page. That's just the total current rate. And then in navy blue there is the, is how the potential proposed project would be layered in. So now in 2025, we're maintaining that $1.10 tax rate, but we're also leaving the school corporation flexibility for any future plans or any future projects that they have. So this project would be for $44,250,000 for a borrowing amount. We're assuming in all of this that the interest rate would be 5%. If you sold bonds right now, you're probably closer to 375 or 4. And then we're also assuming assessed value grows at 5%. The school corporation has grown their tax base significantly more than that over the last five years, but again, trying to be a little bit conservative with these, with these projections going forward. The maximum legal parameters, if you do decide to move forward, this would be in the resolution at the next month of the second 1028 hearing. So this, the total borrowing, like I mentioned, $44,250,000. Of that amount, $500,000 would go to pay cost of issuance and professional fees, leaving $43,750,000 for hard and soft project costs. We estimate a maximum interest rate of 6%. Again, if we sold bonds today, I think it would be a lot closer to 375 or 4. Estimated total interest cost there of $27.5 million. The maximum annual lease payment would be the maximum payment that you, that the school corporation would be legally allowed to make in any given year of $8 million. If you divide that $8 million by the school corporation's net assessed value, that's where you get the maximum tax rate impact of just under 18 cents. However, as I showed in the previous slide, with the school corporation having some debt falling off and their tax, tax base growing, the net impact over the 2023 rate is zero cents. We're going to structure these bonds in a manner to maintain the $1.10 total tax rate. Have some additional information that we're legally required to put in there as well, which is really just their max annual payments at any given time divided by the school corporation's net assessed value. And then also, the, the last row there is the direct and overlapping debts, so that's factoring in all the debt by the county, city, town, library, townships, all of, all of that debt divided by the school corporation's net assessed value. So there's a, a couple of ratios there. I think the biggest takeaway is that, that this is all being funded within the $1.10 tax rate that the schools had historically. Happy to answer any questions.
Could I get your cellphone number? Because I got a feeling I'm going to need you to answer. No, I'm kidding. Out in the community, it's, the way you make it, I mean, it's great. I understand it for me to regurgitate that one. Get me thrown out of a place or two. Any questions, Board? We, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we are at the point of addressing the 1028 preliminary determination. As Luke had indicated, there is no resolution at this particular meeting. It will be conducted at the second meeting. We can't open up for public comment. Just as a side note, I will address the interest rates if you sold bonds recently with the district during our financial presentation during the regular meeting, and the 2025 tax rate that he had indicated, where, where we would be standing, and talk about our assessed value. But at this time, I will open up for any questions. Attorney Peterson is here to address any of those from the public if there are some.
Would anyone like to comment?
Seeing that, Mr. President, is my recommendation that the board makes a recommendation to close this public hearing.
I move that we close this hearing. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We're going to quickly move into the, all the good stuff. We're going to now open the December 12, 2023, 2023 Greater Clark County School Board of Trustees meeting. Would you all please stand with me and say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Winning the Ace Cup to me solidifies a career of learning and expanding and growing. It just shows that the hard work's really been worth it.
We know what we do. We love what we do. And the synergy on this team speaks for itself. And if anything, I think the other teams should be worried about us.
Honestly, I don't think there's anything to be nervous about. We cook well together, but we also like each other. You know, and it's important. You know, you have to like the people you're working with. We came together as strangers, and we're leaving as friends.
Well, the most exciting thing about this competition is that we get to win.
I think it's really about competing against Team Destination. We could just only beat ourselves.
I was going to say the international.
We're working along together with some coworkers, a relationship across the company, sharing ideas and obviously building that relationship all the way up to the top and having the opportunity to compete with the best of the best in this company.
Very rewarding.
So obviously, they did not know that we had Christine showing up at that competition. They never saw student nutrition coming, ever. So we're here tonight to recognize her. I'm Beverly, and I've got Natalie Turner, my DM, here. And I've also got Kate Young. She's our regional dietitian that helps us make sure that we're meeting all the, all the requirements for student nutrition. But I have a special guest to come out and just say a few words about how amazing Christine is.
Oh, my God.
First, I got to give her a hug.
What were you hiding?
All different.
So hello, everyone. Thank you. It's a privilege to be here tonight. My name is Laura McMahon. I'm the senior executive chef for Student Nutrition for Anamart. And I had the privilege of coaching the Student Nutrition team up to our enterprise level at our world headquarters in Philadelphia this past October. So this competition started about a year and a half ago from the district level. As you saw in the video, there are seven lines of business. So it's a pretty intense competition. The best of the best made it to the enterprise team. Christine had submitted a recipe at the district level. She advanced to the regional level. Then we all met in Texas, all three regions of student nutrition. And the chefs had a, a cooking battle in Texas. When I tell you, it was 122-degree heat index and the air conditioner broke in the kitchen. So they were really tested to their limits. Christine and I had a nice car ride back to the hotel before the comp. We met the day before. We drove over and we were talking. And I said, I gave her the speech. I said, you know, you made it this far. You've already won. This is such a great, amazing opportunity for you to network with your colleagues, with other chefs, and just the personal growth and the journey. And then the next day, she arrived, and I just said, you know, cook with your heart. Just cook with, with what you know, because it's an ACF-sanctioned event. She's like, I don't even know what that means. Like, just cook what you know. Cook your food. Cook your passion. And that she did. And she executed very well. And up against all of her, the other chefs in the competition, she walked away with a bronze medal in that competition and earned herself a place on our enterprise team for Student Nutrition, which was the top three, which was an outstanding accomplishment, accomplishment for her. So fast forward, we, we practiced every Tuesday virtually because our chefs were in all three regions, which was a task in itself, but they worked together as a team. They developed an amazing bond, the three chefs together. We met three times in person. They flew into Philadelphia, and we practiced in person. And the, the growth that they had as a team, very proud of them. It was an amazing experience for all four of us together. Chef Alicia, Chef Ryan are watching right now, so give them a shout out as well. So she, one of my favorite lines from Christine during the whole competition was when she won a spot on the enterprise team, she said to me, I have to do this again. Like, yes, you get to do this again. It was an amazing experience. So we practiced all summer. The team, such great progress. And as you can see, they walked away with gold medals. They did an outstanding job, the three of them together, always working very hard together. Christine made a fantastic dumpling, which I'm sure her family ate all summer leading up to the event. Just a lot of personal growth, a lot of great relationships, a lot of networking with other chefs within the company. It was a fantastic opportunity for all of us as the chefs together, working together, something we're really proud of, that we have the opportunity to do these things and grow together as chefs. And we've just invited Christine to be part of our Culinary Alliance, which is 15 of the best, hand-selected from our regional vice presidents to be part of the alliance to help innovate, ID. We're very proud to have her. We're very proud of her and her accomplishments. So please come up to get your medal again. So congratulations on your honor. I have this for you, too.
Oh, it says princess on it.
It does say princess.
Now I'm hungry. Yeah.
Yeah.
All righty. Moving along here with the board meeting. Board, I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Can I please have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining. Next would be the approval of minutes from previous meetings. That'd be an executive session, a regular meeting, and I move that we approve those. Could I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Now we shall move along. I don't believe we have any, what's that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining. I'm sorry, I'm in fifth gear here, this first business. I don't believe we have public comments, so we'll move right into Ms. Huberger and major funds monitoring report. Hang on to your seats.
This is a hard act to follow. My gosh, great things happening in Greater Clark. I mean, I'm so proud of you, Christine. That, you know, you, this whole team has represented exactly what we stand for. And we can't be any prouder, I know. And I'm sure the board echoes that. So thank you for all being here, too. All right. So now for some pain. So we're going to talk about the major funds really quick. This is as of November, and December is approaching quickly, which is a really important time that sets your position for the year. That's when the DOAB takes a look at how well you are doing. That's where the critical nature comes in. It sets your tone for your next budget. So this is a very important time. So next meeting in January, you probably won't hear from me on financials for a little while because we make sure that we do a lot of things to handle that, that process. So heading into December, if you take a look at your education fund, here's what is important. And mind you, all of my major transactions occur at the end of December, which I'll explain later on in the meeting. But as of November of last year, we ended education fund at $12 million. That is not reflecting the final transfer at that point last year. So this year, we're ending with $16 million without that final transfer. Thus, the increase in need to transfer more out of education into operations by resolution for the '24 budget went from $10 million to $11.5 million. You can see why, why we need to do that. Costs are going up, and I need to meet that goal of increasing appropriation in operations. And it's been my concern, we will be getting very close. I'm really monitoring everything that's going out. I don't care if it's $73. I don't care if it's $1,000. So we're monitoring that to get our appropriations to zero because we are there. We've paid our bills. So any other smaller ones that we need to do, I'm getting it right to that point. But the DLGF has not approved yet our '24 budget, and they know I'm really trying to push that up. This district should be, you know, coming in, and they only have a $19 million appropriation authorization to spend in your operations. We got it up to about $23 million. You really should be between $28 and $35 million with the operation. Right now, because of all the work that needs to be done in the district of buildings, I'm having to hit it through bond issuance. So we are going to make that a goal over the next five years, is to really bolster your appropriations. And the way to do that is to continue to increase your cash balance. And so you're going to see, start seeing a lot more cash balance in operations, but not to be held on to for forever. It's just to get the authority to spend at the budget level that you should in due time. Takes a little while to, to hit that. A lot of factors go into that. There are some limitations, meaning that the state of Indiana legislatively, in the efforts to control a dollar figure that goes out in the property tax in another way, aside from tax caps, is giving you the maximum growth quotient to school districts. Now, we're growing very nicely. We should be allowed to capture that, but there is a maximum to that. It's always been a maximum. So I always question about tax caps. But anyhow, we'll work on that goal to get there. The board is aware that, I've talked about that previously. Nonetheless, in your operations fund, we are going, in November of '23, we ended with $2.2 million in the hole. I've explained that ad nauseam as to why that's okay with me because of when we collect property tax. But last year, this time, we were at $3.7 million in the hole. So we are doing better in what we're spending and how we're utilizing the funds that we do have available. Debt service, pension debt, and rainy day. Of course, rainy day, let's just take a look at that for one second. $6.1 million this year. Last year, you were only at $3 million. So some of the things that may have to occur with this in the ensuing year is because what the public hearing we just had, there are allocations for land purchases. So when those come up, I may be hitting the rainy day, but doing a reimbursement. There's two ways I can do it. We do have enough cash flowing through the district. I can create its own separate fund as a reimbursable, and that, too, will show on the negative. So in essence, the cash that's sitting in rainy day will be covering that. Or I can post it directly to rainy day and get reimbursed. Either way, I will get reimbursed from the bond that will be issued upon approval. So. That's how that's going to work. And, you know, speaking of bonds, Luke did talk about 2025 and that tax rate coming down. Because we have a five-year plan, we know how we're going to fill that tax rate. We were real solid in '23, '24. '23 is ending, we know. '24, we've already done our repayment. As a matter of fact, tonight, you, the president and secretary, you know how we approved the pool, parkwood, and district-wide work. We're only attaining that money as we need it watching tax rates, right? I mean, I haven't, you can't just erect a pool in another building and just let me have that money sitting. It's not necessary. So we're saving the taxpayer tax rates, our tax, uh, interest on this money. So I only borrow as needed. And as if, if the rates are going down, Stiefel does reach out to me and we enact it, and Thomas and I get the legals together. And because the board already approved that project, we did sell $35 million. The first one was $20 million. We did sell $30 million. And the, the key with the $20 million is that we had district-wide work going on, even though we don't see that pool, yet there's still work they're doing. We don't see parkwood, yet there's still work. So because of having to do district-wide repairs, I am spending that, those funds out. And you could see that in the bond report, right? Because it says Series A. This will be Series B that will try to combine in one line, so that way it doesn't get confusing. And, you know, I'll be starting to kick in some larger funds because the projected dig dates, bid dates are going to be occurring between, bid dates are like January and dig dates April. So we got that timeframe, and that's when a lot of work I start, start paying for. So I didn't want to get us to where we're rushing to get the money, and we didn't take advantage of a 3.39% interest rate. So that's what you're signing tonight. That's, that's what you're going to be getting individually. No action is needed on that, except just a signature from a president and secretary. We'll have that signed and turned over to the attorney tonight so that he can get that properly filed. Having that been said, I believe there's everything I addressed there. We know that AV increases are happening. So I will be meeting with Stiefel tomorrow and Thursday. I will be in Indianapolis for the semi-annual financial required meetings, that they'll be talking about quite a few things. And I will probably come back to the board with a report from that. They'll be talking about things with textbook rental as well. That I'll probably bring back. With all the conversation with the figures within the district, Mark has done a lot of conversation at county level about assessed value. And like, and we also know what we got approved for, for the land purchase that we're getting ready to make, and the businesses that are going on, and the developers that have had these conversations with the school district, which I totally appreciate. That's, I love, love that the developers came and said, hey, superintendent, really, this is what's going on. We want you to be prepared. We have these projections that we're doing and borrowing at a, between a conservative 4% to 5%, in some cases, 6% increase. We will be engaging with Dr. McKibben again on our demographic study to, you know, share the information that the, the developers have said and about the four companies that are coming to River Ridge, and to take a look at the turnover down, the, the new housing turnover down in Jeffersonville, to give us an update on that. So that way, you know, you feel very comfortable on what direction we're heading with this. In addition to that, we also will be engaging in policy analytics to evaluate our property values once again. So we'll, we'll move forward with that. But we're very, very confident after all of the things that we talked about. The assessor had, oh, Mark, what was it? So much dollars and appeals that we're waiting on that will increase our property value. It should have increased now, right? But it will hit probably the rolls between, you know, next, our next assessed value distribution and the following one. Those should be cleared up. So how much can we save on?
There were 1,600 appeals they were dealing with.
So that's varied properties, you know, values. So that will increase that on top of the growth that the, the developers have, have indicated to us. We just have to be prepared. We just got to be prepared. And guess what? We are because we have a five-year plan. So there are some things that, you know, we're going to be looking into, when we can fit in some of the required, you know, the asks that were made when we did the middle school. So that's what we're going to work on. So on Thursday, through the breaks that I have, I will be meeting with Luke and Matt to talk about, okay, here's where we are. We see this report. Here's where we are. And here's where I need to borrow the money for the middle school. We'll start that process earlier on than '25. But again, I don't, I'm not, that's not going to be erected, you know, until after that, because you know how long it takes. We have to plan and that kind of thing. So I'll probably be borrowing in '25. That's why they showed that crystal. That way, I know exactly where we stand, how much I can borrow in there, how much I can fit in there, and if there's anything I can do at that year or congruently at the construction of the middle school with park. So that's what we're going to be figuring out, different options. And they're going to run a couple of options with a higher assessed value, which will make that gap bigger. But we don't want to overestimate until we get all these studies, and that does take a little bit of time. So we will go on the low end to a conservative higher end in assessed value. And then I'll be able to say, when can we get this money in for middle school, and all the things that we, what we need on the five-year plan, because we didn't put anything in there that we didn't need, and add in, in park without increasing the tax rate. That's, that's what we're trying to do. Now, the caution is, is strictly this. If your assessed value goes down, then that makes the picture look different. So we'll plan for the worst and hope for the best. But actually, we haven't been too far off on doing the best. So that's the way I'm going to really plan is for the best. And we know what to do if the worst comes along because we can move timing on borrowing. So just give you a little confidence in that. And then in January, finally, the DOAB will be meeting Thursday. I will find out the release of those, that information, which will be end of calendar year '22, required to do that fancy little presentation on those kind of things. We are, no problems. You know, my board knows where we stand at the end of the year and every month. So you're aware in '22 how well we have done. So, but we do still have to go through the painful thing. I don't think it will be on the sixth. It might be the second meeting, usually around that time. So there'll be a board of finance meeting. I will probably appoint, you know, we'll point the members at the sixth. However, the official board of finance meeting, I'll just kind of think about, do I want to do a portion of what you're required to do, which is I'll stay in checks, bank, let me tell you my bank information, and then open up another board of finance meeting to go through the, the DOAB indicators for you. So that's the plan between now and the end of January. We're a little bit busy in the business office. Our auditors are here. I just appreciate everybody being patient with me during this time of year. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
The January meeting.
And I keep saying January. I know, she's told me all day long. It's not, I'll be here on six. If I just show up.
People are calling me like, hey.
I thought she said the sixth. Yes, it is January night. She's told me that about 14 times a week. I'm just prepared, ready, whatever day. But I'll eradicate any questions that you may have.
Board, we good?
What is your obsession with January 6th?
I don't know. I just feel like that's the day I should be talking to somebody. I don't know. If not, then I want to wish you all Merry Christmas. Thank you for an amazing year.
Thank you.
In our finance division. I'll be back up here shortly.
Thank you. All right. Moving right along here, the consent agenda. Does, I know we've all read through it. We've talked about it. Is, does anybody want to make a motion on this?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Ask some minutes.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining. Opposed and abstaining.
Before you move on, I wanted to bring notice to a couple of positions in the personnel report that you just approved. One is the head football coach at Jeffersonville High School, Joe Washington. Who has been a counselor at River Valley for several years, played football at Western Kentucky University. Has coached at several high schools over Louisville. We feel like he is, is the right fit for Jeff High and will lead Jeff High into the future. Hopefully a positive future. And then also Barb Toll will be the new literacy, one of the, our literacy coaches. That's going to help us with the K-8 literacy model, what we're doing with science of reading and just trying to improve our literacy scores throughout the district.
All right. Thank you very much. And we did vote, did we? Okay. Fair Katrina, would you please help us with the gifts to buildings?
I would love to. A lot to Charles Town Middle School for their theater department for the program ads. Want to also point out $1,200 from Lyons Roofing for the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration that Greater Clark puts on. And $2,000 from Jeffersonville FOP Lodge. Donate to the eighth grade field trip to Washington DC, which I had the privilege of going on last year. Will never do that again. Don't ask me, not going. And then also $1,200 from John and Jennifer Beckham for Buildings and Trades at Jeff High. And Rita Fleming donated $4,000 for the Construction Club with Stephen Toll at Parkview Middle School. I move that we accept these gifts to buildings in the amount of $9,500.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions or comments?
I think that this really shows, um, the strong connection to our community that's been established. And I'm amazed at the amount of dollars that are donated every month. I appreciate that.
I agree. I agree. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the approval for the gifts to buildings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining. All right, we're moving to the action items, appropriation of the teacher appreciation grant. Ms. Hilton, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Good. Okay, the administration is requesting permission to use Fund 3750 Performance Award to appropriate and expend $382,069.09 from account numbers 11100 Elementary, 11200 for Middle, 11300 through 11600 for High School. Our corporations have received these funds from the state for our teachers who are highly effective and effective based on their evaluations. Greater Clark had 378 highly effective teachers who will receive $632.50 and 181 effective teachers who will each receive $506. Approval is needed to appropriate this money from 3750 prior to expenditure. Board Policy 320.01 Teacher Appreciation Grant was approved on September 26, 2023. References are protocol for the allocation. The Performance Award Grant Funds will be distributed to teachers on December 22. And this has been discussed with the President Samantha Pierce. At this time, we're asking for your approval for the tag grant.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Board, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the tag grant.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions or comments regarding this? Okay, all those in favor of the approval of the appropriation teacher appreciation grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining. You, are you the next one, too? Yeah, girl. All right, a resolution for supplemental payments. I got you.
Yes. Attached is a resolution to pay the employees listed supplemental pay for the work they provided. And this is the same thing that we had kind of discussed before. These are things that come up outside of the contract that are not in the extra duty schedule. And these items have been discussed with Samantha Pierce, the GCA president. So at this time, we would like to ask for your approval for this resolution of supplemental payments.
Board, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mustaine. Any questions or comments? We remember what that's about, right? So, okay, no questions or comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okey doke, and here we go again. Resolution for the addition of middle school sports. Got you.
Yes. So with the approval of the attached resolution, we would like to add baseball, soccer and softball to the list of sports recognized by Greater Clark County Schools. This would allow us to govern the programs while allowing the teams to use our names, mascots, facilities and insurance. So given that information, we would like to add, or ask for approval to add these sports.
Board, I move that we approve the attached resolution. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I think it's fantastic that we're adding soccer, baseball and softball at the middle school level. I know that, you know, it's, as a high school coach, I scope, I coached five different sports. And it's a struggle when you don't have a feeder program that's supported by your schools. And when we have schools on our, when we have, you know, people on our fields that aren't sanctioned by the schools, it's all kinds of things. And I'm really excited for those middle school teams.
Totally agree. Okay, all those in favor?
One more question.
Okay.
Regarding the softball and baseball, do we have fields like at all the middle schools?
No, we don't. Typically, they'll practice in the, later in the evening on the high school fields. Or sometimes they'll use the Little League Park, you know, wherever they can find a practice space if they're, if the high school's having a game that night. But they're sharing, yeah, facilities with the high school on this, especially the games.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of this, approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining. Okey doke.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okey doke. Dr. Hartlech?
Good evening, Board. We are working along to try to spend the remainder of our learning loss dollars for ESER III. And as you know, Greater Clark County Schools implements a program called Character Strong to support our pre-K through 12th grade through a digital program designed to build social and emotional competence, develop character and cultivate strong educator-student relationships. So we are excited to bring on this opportunity as a one-day training on May 28th entitled School Culture Training, which is a, um, a branch of Character Strong and aligns to the same principles behind that program. And it will focus on increasing belonging, wellbeing and engagement. This is an interactive one-day training focusing on a research-backed framework to equip staff members with easy-to-use tools that support student success. We know the pandemic, um, has brought on a lot of social, emotional and behavior, um, increases that we see in our students. And that has taken on, or carried over into a lot more stress into our educators. And so this program provides simple strategies to improve student engagement and increase wellbeing overall for both our students and the staff. The training will focus on key, five key takeaway, staff, community building, research-backed classroom engagement, usable tools and strategies, meaningful and inspirational content and practical problem solving. It will be paid for with ESER III learning loss dollars and will cost $15,500.
Okay. Board, I move that we approve the Character Strong School Culture Training. Could I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions or comments about that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining. All right. You up again? Okay.
I'm here again. Board, as you know, we have made a strong commitment to Orton-Gillingham and to support the science of reading that the state has pushed on heavily. It's a huge focus right now. And our goal is by 2027 that our students achieve 95% mastery on the iRead. I believe, along with our academic team, that we have made some great investments and steps toward building the capacity of our staff with the science of reading approaches and the training and work that we've done with Orton-Gillingham. Recently, at our last meeting, you approved a training that's paid for through a competitive science of reading grant that we were awarded almost approximately $250,000. That allowed us to cover a week-long training the first of June. And it also is allowing us to fund the literacy coach Mr. Loffner mentioned. And it will allow Tammy Nuxall to specifically focus on students in grades K through three. So as we begin to plan, moving forward in sustainability and all the work that we've done now with K through three, the next progressive step of that is how does this work transfer and carry on into our students and their learning in grades four and up? And that would be the IMS morphology training. And so I am bringing to you our competitive, uh, competitive science of reading grant. That award opened up some of our dollars in ESER. So we reached out, contracted with a company. And this will be morphology plus 30-hour course. And that is the different parts of a word, the root words, prefixes, suffixes, the relationships with words within the language. So it will also be a tremendous support to our ELL students. It is a hands-on, interactive and personalized class that provides a complete understanding of morphology, fluency, vocabulary comprehension and how to apply it in the classroom. Greater Clark will offer this training as additional support in our literacy programming efforts. After participating in the accredited structured literacy course, teachers will have an understanding of the structure and foundation of the English language. Educators will have an understanding of where to begin instruction with students with dyslexia as well as students in all three tiers of RTI. Participants will gain knowledge about the science of reading and the history of the English language. Also have a better understanding about how to diagnose reading difficulties, including dyslexia and how to support them. Understand how EL students can cognate to help learn English, administer various types of assessments, implement and create structured literacy lessons on morphology, vocabulary, fluency and comprehension. This now, because of the other grant we received, will be funded by ESER III. The participants will be paid as stipend. It will be July 8th through the 12th. And also they'll have a certificate at the end of that training. And we're very excited about this next step in our literacy adventures.
Awesome. Board, do I have a motion for the approval of the IMSC morphology training contract?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the morphology training contract.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions or comments?
Um, forgive me if you've already got this. How will the participants be chosen?
Well, they are currently signing up because, when, because it's a week in the summer, there can be a lot of conflicts. And we are also looking at so many per school. So the, each school will have a representation of that. And kind of begin to set up like a train, the trainer, and then build it out from there.
Are you focusing on elementary or is there any secondary?
Um, it's going to be four through eight. Will be available for that, or eligible, I should say.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of the training contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining. All right, we're finally down to the permission for CFO to conduct end-of-year transactions.
Absolutely. Here we are, here we are again, at the end of the year. It is necessary for the treasurer and the business office to continue to conduct transactions that are required to be performed to conclude the end of current financial year. Annual air requests permission to be granted in order to keep the district compliant with the requirement to remain timely. Among these transactions includes the issuance of any, any required payments to be made and sent to vendors as necessary prior to the end of the year and before the next available board meeting. All transactions will be reviewed and approved by the CFO and will be submitted to the, to the board at the board meetings in January. Additionally, to close annual financial tra, transactions such as encumbrances that will need to be carried forward to preserve appropriation needed for intended use. Also appropriation reductions and transfers will be need to be done within funds as required by state board accounts. The appropriation reductions and transfer will be presented to the board in a form of a resolution. Some you have already approved via the 24 budget process. All of these transactions are required in our standard practices. I respectfully request that the board grant permission to the CFO of Greater Clark County Schools to conduct the necessary end-of-year transactions for 2023.
Board, I move that we approve the permission to conduct end-of-year transactions to the CFO for 2023 school year. Could I please have a second?
I'll be second, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions or comments about this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining.
Thank you.
What about that?
What about that?
We've come to the wonderful turn of the corner, Board comments. Mr. Jones?
Had a whole lot. Just happy holidays and enjoy the break.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hutchinson?
Merry Christmas!
Yeah, girl.
I'm so excited. I love Christmas.
There you go. I got a Grinch t-shirt on under there. Mr. Paul?
And just to all, all the love, joy and peace of the season and really looking forward to a fabulous 24 with the Greater Clark County Schools. Exciting things are happening and I love it.
Take it, man. Good job. I appreciate that. I know it. We're working hard. Ms. Mustaine?
Yes, today I paid my respects to Mr. Michael Henigan. He was my very favorite principal. And we always had a joke with each other that we would try to sneak and call each other trouble. I don't know why he called me trouble. I was never trouble. But he would try to sneak in on me.
Someone who was trouble.
Or I would sneak in on him and say trouble. Well, today I got the last word. Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy New Year.
All right, uh. Ms. Freeman?
Yeah, happy holidays. Just want to remind everybody that our bands and our choirs have holiday concerts. Uh, I am actually going to try to make one in like the next 15 minutes. I don't think I'll be able to do it. But just remind you all, go out there, support the arts, support the kids. And once again, Merry Christmas.
Awesome. Ms. Perkins?
Yes, um, I would like to send our thanks from the board to Mayor Moore of Jeffersonville. Because he invited a grade level from each of our Jeffersonville schools to ice skate. And I've gotten some feedback from some of the kids and some of the teachers and it's been great fun. A lot of bumps and bruises and, oh goodness, I can't stand up, but they're having great fun. And I, I really appreciate Mayor Moore picking up this for our kids.
Lot of cast out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And orthopedic.
A couple of things, I, I just want to say what a great celebration we had, the Utica School for the Blue Ribbon. That was really awesome. And it was exciting to see not just parents, but kids and grandparents. And, and they all were there and understood what it was about and just really, really, it was a huge, a huge thing. And, and like I said there, I, I believe this, you know, once you win one Super Bowl, you want to win another one. And that would be really cool. There's one school that's received that honor, I think, six times since it's been invented or brought about or created in 1982. And that's in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, actually. Believe that or not, Keith, Keith looking at me, there's no way. That's, that's the research I did. At any rate, the other deal too, to Ms. Mustaine's point, Mick Henigan in 1984 hired me. And I don't know how many people kicked him after he did that. But we had a very good relationship. Long after he went to central office, we had friendship. And I got to know him and his wife very, very well. And at one point, he's going to Texas and he's talking about, um, he's building a condo. And he'd called me out there to buy some old tools, kind of hoodwinked me. But at any rate, no, it's not true. But that, the point of the, the whole ordeal is, um, when he, I said, what are you going to do with this, your land and this log cabin? And he said, well, I'm going to sell it when I get back. And I said, well, I just bought a house. And I said, well, what, what are you, what are you going to do with this? And then he said, sell it. And I said, well, how much you need for it? How much you going to want for it? And he said, you know, told me the price. I said, well, I'll give you that. And we shook hands. And that was the deal. Now, here's the real kicker of all this. He gets appraised and it appraises for $35,000 more than we shook hands for. So now I'm at a crossroads here. There's the devil and the angel. He goes, hey, just go ahead. No, no, he won't know. Two days later, I go back and I say, Mick, I want you to see this appraisal. And, and he looked at it and said, that's, that's good. And I said, I, I don't know that I can give you that much. I don't, I, I was borrowed out. I just bought another house. I mean, I'm in the middle of this. And he said, John, I'm embarrassed for you. I'm, I'm ashamed of you. And I said, what do you mean, you're ashamed of me? And he said, I shook your hand for $160,000 and I want $160,000. And it was one of the most touching things that, you know, you, you talk about educators that help you. And he was forever the educator. Finally, and I won't, this will take a minute. All the homes on that street are right on the All the homes on that street are right on the edge of the street. Mine's way back in the woods. And I asked him, how did you decide to build that house way back there? And mind you, he was the principal of Jeff High School. And he said, um, he said, well, I took a stone and I threw it as far as I could. And I went and got that stone and I threw it again as far as I could. And I said, well, I, I don't get it. He said, well, where that stone landed was the middle of that basement. And I said, well, I, I still don't get it. He said, well, I figure any kid, high school kid that can throw a stone twice as far as I can deserves to hit my house. Merry Christmas, folks.
It sounds like Mick.
Mr. Loffner?
Well, first I want to thank everyone for the presents. Thank you. Saw some good chocolate chip cookies in there, it looks like, so.
I saw some amazing chocolate chip.
I'm, I'm on board with that. And also I, I, I agree, we've had a great year, twenty twenty three with what's going on with, you know, the, the contract, you know, facilities. We've established some really good academic programs that are taking hold within our schools, especially with the academies and science of reading. And we think we'll see great results with that as we move forward. And I'm really looking forward to twenty four. I mean, when you look at the two, uh, the elementary at Charlestown, the elementary at Pike, you'll start seeing walls going up and things getting done a lot faster. And also we'll break ground on Parkwood Elementary and break ground on an auditorium in twenty four, probably in the spring. So a lot of exciting things going on, a lot of things to look forward to. So, and everyone have a good, great, great break.
All right, I need a motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed and abstaining. We're done.
Thank you all.